Call attention to you. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to our flag, our United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There will be no budget transfers and there will be no executive session and we will adjourn at the end of our open session. Also, this meeting is being videotaped. Are there any comments tonight from the public? No? Okay. Student advisory, Grace.
Hello.
Hello.
I think you guys already know me, my name is Grace, so I'm gonna sit here. I have quite a few things to talk about. I'd like to start off by saying that student council went to the CMAS on Friday, November 12th, which was last Friday. We went to Middleborough High School, who learned leadership. We got to see all of the other student councils in the South Shore. Me and two other, I think you can say colleagues at student council ran into someone at the workshop. It's called the Flakegate. It was actually very successful. I was a little shocked, but it went very well. This week, starting today, it starts Spirit Week up until next Wednesday. Today was 2000th Day. Tomorrow was Western Day. Friday is Grill Dad slash Soccer Mom Day. Monday is Camo Day. Tuesday, TV Character Day. And finally, America Day on Wednesday. I know tomorrow a lot of people are excited for Western Day. Student Council is holding their annual toy drive. The student council collects toys every year and then donates these toys to one of our sending towns for children that are in need this holiday season. We're dedicating the donations this year in name of Gary Wood, who volunteered for 37 years to deliver gifts to many adults and children. He passed away recently from cancer. He was an AP vet that dedicated a lot of his time to, a lot of his free time to help people in need. Today was also Powder Puff, black football competition. It raised a lot of spirit through the grades, I was hoping. Everyone made a great showing. There could only be one winner this year, and it was the juniors. Although, there may have been some graphic controversy. Cleanup days are service days. Student Council is hoping to organize cleanup days to get some community service done in our sending towns. If any of the committee members have a location or thought of where we can have a cleanup day, please contact the school administrator with information and they will get it to us.
My backyard.
I also just want to mention quickly that the SST Feeder Club is actually doing very well. We have a lot of new members this year. We got new sound equipment, which is really nice. We have body facts, which we haven't had. And during the summer, we are taking a break just so we can memorize lines, be on Club Kids' Favorite in January. Skills USA, they're having a Fall Leadership on Monday, November 22nd. They're having a holiday party on December 11th here at SST. They have a food drive and a cat and muffin drive, cool effect. It is a shop competition, but if anyone wants to donate, they can drop off food to the school and ask it to be added to your favorite shop. They're also having a hockey knee grapple. It's Saturday, November 20th at 7:00 ham at the Hanson Athletic Club, 171 Reed Street.
Thank you, Grace.
Thanks, Grace. Okay, I'd ask for motion to approve the set of minutes as listed on the agenda. Situate, seconded by Cohasset. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstain, Whitman abstain. No opposed? Motion carries. Treasurers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your package that I dropped off this evening, I apologize for the fact it wasn't in your packet last weekend. So the Treasury report on the cover, we have the Breast Cancer Walk, which happened at the back of the school a while back. Some automotive kids, yes, I think that's an engine. I'm not much of an automotive guy, but it looks like an engine of some sort, so.
Reasonable guess.
Reasonable guess, yeah. And of course, our culinary staff, who's students who are out by the curbside, pick up for all of our breastlet activities and so forth, so. Our Treasury report, basically, our first page is cash balances. It shows a little bit more detail than normal. It just shows you how our interest rates, the interest rates are terrible out there in the world. All of our money is in cash. We don't invest money in any sort of stocks or bonds and so forth. But the rates are bad, which is, I'm sure affects everybody's savings accounts. But overall, our cash balance at the end of October was a little over $7 million, which is, again, down from where we were in June, but we're still in the cycle. We've only built our member towns once during this cycle. We build them again for November 1st. We'll be getting money in this month for their second member town assessments. Our OPAM reserve account is $838,000. We continue to add to that every year through the budget. The second page is our revenue. Again, the, not a lot, there's no revenue from our towns this month, obviously, as we just build them for November 1st. We have some investment income. We get our regular state chapter 70 money. And the non-resident tuition is just, I just booked it this month because of, October 1st is normally the deadline for enrollment, to fix the enrollment. So I usually put this in an op, on October 1st. Again, the $1.5 million that shows up here is the money we collected last school year. The money we collected last school year goes to reduce our town's assessments for this school year. So that's how we handle the tuition for modest, do not additional students. And our final page is the, not our final page, but our next page is our expenditures for the month. Again, $954,000, the line shares close to $700,000 in payroll. Everything's running smoothly. No surprises. Again, the second round of supplies, the shop supplies are getting ordered as soon as the teachers get settled and do their first initial opening of school. Now they're doing more supplies and seeing where they are. And overall, we're running smoothly with everything. Janine is doing a great job in the purchasing department. We're still under the CARES Act reimbursement program through Plymouth County, so she's doing a diligent job of keeping track of all of our COVID-related expenses that we will then submit back to Plymouth County for reimbursement. And of course, Pam Curtis is our new payroll person. She's been in for about six, eight weeks now. She's doing a great job with everything, and it's been a nice transition. Tricia's still with us a little bit to help out in the transition because there's a lot that goes on in the office from the payroll side of things. And, but their overall, things are running very smoothly. The next page is our, is the Treasury, is the warrants, who we voted at later on in the night. And so forth, and we don't have any budget transfers. So that is pretty much the Treasury report for this month.
Can I have a motion to accept the Treasurers? Donald Whitman, seconded by Noel Walp. All those in favor? Or any discussion on that? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Jim, do you have anything?
No, I'm all set.
No questions? No comments from the chairman tonight, except it's nice to see people here. I do appreciate you coming. Subcommittee, Cattle Project Subcommittee met with our project manager and architect last week. Tom will provide an update in his report. And then we go to Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good segue. I'll start off with expanding on what Bob just mentioned regarding the, our engineering firm we're working with, DRA, and our project manager. The Cattle Project Subcommittee heard some feedback and some ideas from the engineering firm about a potential new construction project here on campus. And they're going to bring back some revised ideas, hopefully, to the Subcommittee by the end of the month. And my hope would be that we would bring the scope of the ideas to the full committee at our December school committee meeting. Just as a half a step back, we got a debt authorization approval from our eight communities. And part of that authorization included funds for us to be able to renovate shops and expand. Now, we're still waiting on MSBA. We've been waiting on MSBA for several years now, as you know. But we did take, we went to our communities and said, look, we need to make some adjustments. We've got programs that need more space. The communities responded, which is fantastic. And so we're taking the next step as quickly as possible. So the idea right now, and you'll see it in more detail, the idea is a, about a 9,000-square-foot structure that would be placed in the front of the school in between essentially the two entrances in that grassy area. And that would allow us to place potentially up to two programs. The strategy here is that by opening up a little bit of new space, we can relocate one of our shops to this area and then renovate some of the shops that are in this 1992 and the 1962 wing here, so that several programs such as automotive, HVAC, electrical, can have more space to meet demand. So the hope, the timeline would be that along with, along with these ideas, our project manager and our engineering firm will work on revising the scope. The Subcommittee provided feedback on, and questions on building materials and whatnot. And I'll be meeting with officials from Hanover Town Hall about septic capacity with our project manager to hear more about that. But the idea is that we would go out to bid and we would be in a position where this summer, we'd have two projects going on. One, what I mentioned about the shell, if you will, of that new building. And also the replacement of the roof on this 1992 addition. So that would be great if we can position ourselves to go out to bid, secure the funding. And when, when I come to you at the December meeting and make an initial budget presentation, I will reference this project and I'll reference how, in order to pay for the project, as we told our towns last winter and spring, this would be through borrowing and we would start by doing some initial interest-only borrowing for the first two years. So we're sticking as close to the plan as we can. We'll see how the market, what the market fetches for cost. So that would lead us to a busy summer of 2022. And then that would allow all of our construction programs to work all of next school year on the inside of this, of this new construction. And then with, again, the roof project moving forward. And then the longer-range plan would be that for the summer of '23, we would be able to work on the renovation of some of the shops that I just mentioned. The beauty of the model that we see is that would have no impact on the kids in the building, to be able to either have our kids work on it in the fall or to have an outside contractor work on it in the summer. So one step at a time, but we are definitely, we're definitely moving the idea from concept and do some more tire-kicking. So I hope I can get some additional feedback from committee members when we, when we talk about it in December. So, yeah, that's the latest and we'll have some expanded visuals next month. Tom?
When we talk about more, more room in the shops or more size, is there any possibility that we're going to accept more students in those trades?
Excellent question. That was a question brought up by members of the Subcommittee. My initial answer is probably not, that the scope of this project, and I don't want to say only 9,000 square feet, but only 9,000 square feet might allow for a very small increase. I almost don't want to promise that, but the, my theory is, if we're able to open up more space in higher-demand programs, then through the exploratory program, I'll use electrical as the example, we can only reasonably take, say, 18 kids, the number of booths we have, the way the shop is laid up. But with additional space, we might be able to say we can take more kids, who we've already accepted, to major in those programs. That, and so if you can increase a little bit of capacity in one area, it might allow for some increased overall numbers. But I would, I would be reluctant to say that it's going to net, you know, a dozen extra kids per year. What we're really hoping for would be support from outside entities like MSBA, outside entities such as the $100 million that is right now in the ARPA, the ARPA money that the legislature is talking about, focused on vocational schools. That's a once-in-a-I-don't-know-blue-moon opportunity for us to, to make the case. And I hope that we can do that. We've definitely done some outreach with our legislative delegation. If we can tap into additional funds, then we can talk about the proper expansion we all want. I was saying to the administrators earlier that one of the other pinch points for us, believe it or not, isn't about shop space. To your point, Tom, about overall number of kids, it's actually about rather mundane things such as the size of the cafeteria and the size of our science labs. Our science classes are being, our science laboratory classes, as you've heard me say for seven consecutive years, it's in our statement of interest, are basically renovated classrooms that were never science classrooms to begin with. These are 700-square-foot classrooms where we're probably just cresting over 20 kids a class, maybe more. So as part of the strategy to doing everything that I mentioned earlier, my hope would be that with each shop we can expand, we can put a related classroom inside the shop. And that, then the ripple effect would be it would open up other classrooms. And maybe, maybe what we could do is figure out a way to expand or maybe double up two classrooms and turn it into a properly-sized science lab. If we can open up science lab space, then the class sizes could be justified. But, so it's, it's the vocational space, the common space, and the academic space. So we can do a little bit, Tom, but we need, we need a bigger project funded outside of local taxpayers to get there.
What would be a timeframe to get to the science lab being perfect?
On a, on a small scale, on a small scale, George, I would say we could possibly see that if, if every renovation were done, by my calculation, we would probably net two classrooms. Because part of it is, the shops are a little bit bigger. We can put a related room right inside the shop.
Right.
Adjacent to a hallway, it can be accessible for kids who have related during the shop day as well as related coming out of academics. I would say the '23-'24 school year might be the place where we could say, oh, look at this, we freed up a couple of classrooms. We have to put in a little extra capital to perhaps renovate it. But the science department space would be better achieved, of course, as part of a broader scope. If you were to go into our science classrooms now, what, I think what any reasonable person would say is that we should probably have half the number of science lab. Take two 700-square-foot, a proper lab that's being built today has enough space for kids sitting, interacting with the teacher, adequate horizontal space for labs, and proper storage in the laboratory location. We, we lack in all of those areas. So we, if we can start to address that, we'll need more square feet to do that, certainly. But that's, that's the plan. So I think we could see some modest improvements.
Nice. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll just make a quick, in terms of COVID update. October was, October was a very quiet month. November seems to be trending in a direction that you might be seeing in the media, where we do our weekly reporting. My last look had us in the month of November with 14 positive cases. In, in the entire month of October, I believe the number was two or three. So we're doing everything we've been doing since the start of the year and we continue to update, update our families on a weekly basis. So more to, you know, more to be said. I have a, there's a, there's a commissioner update for superintendents coming up next week. He does that periodically. Sometimes it's prior to a press release or something like that. So if there are any updates, I'll bring them to you or, or get them to you as soon as possible. Excuse me, as soon as possible. And now, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over for any administrator updates in this busy month.
Thank you, Mr. Committee Man. I'm going to echo something that Tom said about support from our communities. I'm going to, I'm going to give thanks to our communities for their continued support. As I'm sure you are aware, yesterday, our Thanksgiving sales went online at 11 o'clock yesterday morning. Today, they are sold out. So 539 pies gone. 60 dozen rolls were gone in the first half hour. And 37 floral arrangements from our horticulture department were also gone in the first 45 minutes.
Wow.
Yes, wow. I do need to temper that with a little bit, though. I need, and I know you gentlemen know this, and I need the, the communities to know that, that we are a school first and a production shop second. So if you are going to automotive, if you're going to HVAC or conference tree or whatever, or culinary, we're here to teach the students not to just produce large numbers. So I do need to say that across the board. If you gentlemen hear anything from any of your constituents, you can please send them my way. I'd appreciate that. Cosmetology, I'm happy to say, will be starting to open to the public after Thanksgiving. So a lot of hard work done by our maintenance staff, Mr. Moorhead, some outside people. I can't speak highly enough of Ms. Darling, Ms. Storm Prophet, and Ms. Donahoe, who have done a magnificent job in the start of the school year, working in a classroom to do cosmetology. And they've been segueing over to the cosmetology shop just before open house last week. So a really fine job by then, they, they've done an amazing job keeping the students interested, doing curriculum, and now they're back where they need to be with running water and all those types of things so they can do the full gamut of the shop curriculum. I'm going to end with, once again, the, the communities continue to support us in many ways. The horticulture shop, once again, is going to do their holiday sale. So also on the 29th, they'll begin to sell 75 Christmas trees that they pre-ordered for $45 to $80. They're going to have 100 reefs, some of them adorned with holiday attire, some of them simply plain. And they're going to do some tabletop stuff and things like that. But all that will go on sale on the 29th, right aft, right outside of the front. So we'll do that after school. Any questions today, gentlemen? No? Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ms. Baldwin.
Good evening, committee.
Aye.
Everyone as well. Today was a good day. Started with a two-hour delay for students who arrived on time at their delayed time, rested and ready for class. They were most on time, which was great. Teachers had an opportunity to spend time talking about grading practices in small groups, and all reports are that they were rich in vibrant discussions about what we're doing well and some adjustments we'd like to make in the coming days on how we assess students for standards and how we report back to our community. And we'll keep you updated on what adjustments we can make in that area. For me, one of the highlights for the start of the day was to escort one of our freshmen to Mr. Stevens' room so that he could sign up for Dungeons and Dragons Club. And the day got better because as we ended, for me, I was able to poke my head into the graphics department and see a full house full of students in the art club hosted by Martha Paradise, who was volunteering in that role. So that was nice to see. Made my way out to Field to join Mr. Filano for the Powder Puff game. I'm not going to lie, it was really pretty delightful to see the kids without their masks on enjoying a sporting event in a pretty natural way. That was nice. And then scooted home, just to return a little bit later, to see many students, a full parking lot. And, well, the numbers aren't going our way. An exciting game for our students outside tonight. So thank you. It's really feeling a little bit more normal and we couldn't do it without your support. I do have a short report for you. It is admission season. We did have open house since the last time we met and it was a slightly different format where families preregistered in advance. We did not do any marketing. We just had people, we let, we did marketing to those people who were interested. It wasn't sort of mass marketing to the entire community. It was a focused admissions process. We had 220 families come through, but those are 220 families who were seriously interested in flying here. We're now conducting follow-up phone calls to those families to support the admissions process and interviews following suit very soon. Amy Dow is doing a great job, as usual. Her energy enthusiasm and skill is unparalleled. And she's finishing up her tours of our area schools in the next couple of weeks to meet with rising ninth graders or eighth graders in our middle schools. We have parent-teacher conferences on the 4th. We had, they were virtual. They were successful in that 88% of those who registered for the conferences did attend them. So we had a great turnaround. So that format is working. We like that. What thing, an area for consideration and review in the future is that only about 21% of our families signed up for conferences. Teachers are very busy, don't get me wrong. I'm not sure how much more we could handle. We'd have to go to another model. But we'd encourage more families to connect with teachers, virtually but in person on those parent-teacher conference nights. We, like I said, we are, we have been focusing on professional development in the air grading practices and we've had three professional development opportunities since the last time we met. We had a professional time on November 4th, the 16th, after-school, the faculty meeting, and then just this morning. That model of a faculty meeting followed by an extra scoop in the morning seems to be working. We had an opportunity to work with behaviorist Kevin Russo with the entire faculty yesterday after school, a good report there. And then a subgroup of focus students, of focus teachers. We met with him this morning. The remainder of us, as I said, worked on grading practices. So good stuff happening in all areas. I will wrap up by saying that we had some focus student presentations over the last couple of weeks. We're starting to do more and more of the normal stuff. Bigger groups of kids getting together for more historically normal purposes. So we have had students in the gymnasium going through an extracurricular there. We've had kids in our lecture hall, meeting for co-op purposes. If you're an 11th grader, you meet for co-op purposes to learn what to do. And the seniors have been meeting as more of a focus group to get feedback on their experiences and to make sure that they're supported in that environment to workshop any concerns they might face in employment, that they can't share with their employer and aren't really sure how to vet. We provide them substantial support in that area. We've had grade nine information sessions. We had one yesterday, we'll have one more tomorrow. I'm talking about opportunities and expectations at South Shore Tech. And we have had intermittent winter support and meetings to encourage kids to both apply for support and also understand the expectations of participating and support in the winter season. So busy, good. No complaints. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Chairman, can I just make one up?
You certainly may, sir.
Thank you, sir. I did, I just failed to mention that Thanksgiving week is next week, but the football game is on Wednesday night. We play Holbrook Avon, it is their choice. So we are playing a 7:00 game at Holbrook next Wednesday night. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, old business. We have to adopt the admis, oh, you want to talk about the admissions policy. The next item on the agenda, I ask for a motion to adopt the admissions policy that was presented in the October 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Situate?
Second.
And Abington? You got to raise your hand.
Your other hand.
Just swat me. Any discussion on the matter?
Yes. I find it interesting that one of the issues that we talked about at our, and I'll talk about it, the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference, was admissions policies. Right? That was one of the big subjects, right? And what we are adopting is following the state guidelines to the letter, which is outstanding.
Okay, thank you. Anything, Tom?
No, I wouldn't presume to add anything, Mr. Chairman, in case there's other questions.
All right. Okay. All those in favor of the admission policy?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
New business. And we'll go right back to Dan.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chairman. It was a very small conference, there weren't that many, you know, in-house. It was mostly a lot of virtual. And the table, that I usually bring you gifts. You got a pen this year and you got a couple of brochures, one of the, the top 10 rules for municipal employees, what you need to follow, plus the top 10 purposes for us to go into executive session. So it's just for your reading information. When I got there on Thursday, Thursday's event was the open session. And what the subject was, was what we have learned from the pandemic, both positive and negative. And they had three studios that were there. And one of the positive things is that where the students were virtual, the, they were learning, the parents, if the parents were home, they could actually see exactly what their, their children were being taught. Like, one of the challenges would be for teachers challenges would be for teachers and students to get the message out virtually. It's very, you know, trying to do it over online, trying to get your message out, and knowing whether the students are actually grasping what they're trying to be taught. That was a very difficult thing that we seemed to get through. A positive, school committees and subcommittee meetings, we can meet more often. We're doing it from home, or if we had to by phone, like I had to the last meeting. And, and as I say, another one was parents enjoyed because if they were home, they could see and sit with their child and see exactly what they were being taught. That was on the opening session. On the same day, we went to Division Eight meeting, that's all vocational schools. And the big discussion was being able to get the message of vocational education to the middle schools. There's still a lot of areas that will not allow vocational teachers or people to go into their school and have a class session to explain to the children or the students in the middle school what vocational school is all about, and if it's something that they wanna, they wanna try. And also, another issue was talking about the admission policy and methods of filling the spots of vocational school. We hit the, we hit the nail right on the head with ours today because there was a lot of areas that were not, were not taking students or Pala or special ed or non-English speaking students. And they were doing it by a lottery. We have never done that. We have been right on the, right on the money with this new policy that's meeting the state guidelines. Let's see, what else we got? Okay, Friday's event, general session, applying students' voices during troubled times. Students were speaking directly about, they felt as though because of fact that they were virtual, they were not being heard, meaning if they had an issue or something like that. And they wanted to get their message, message through. If they were in, in the school learning, they could possibly sit and talk to one of the teachers or one of the staff that if they had an issue or what they wanted to talk about, they could talk to them. That was, that was a problem. The students, they came up with a way of doing it by maybe having a student committee that would, if there was issues with students, that students would have, would form a committee, and that committee would go to the principal, the vice principal, or whoever was in charge to discuss some of the issues that they had, that they saw that students were complaining about. Also, another thing was dealing with sexual harassment and misconduct complaints. Through the fact that kids were home for a year, and now they're back in the schools, and their relationship with other kids were almost like nonexistent except for their family. So now they're back in school, they're dealing with six-hundred kids, and how they deal with them. And some of them, especially ones that were just entering the school for the first time, felt a little on the outside. So, you know, what they needed to do is, that's when they wanted to form, you know, be able to sit and talk with somebody. And I think we've handled that pretty well. Let's see. Then we had, I went to a legislative update. It was, it was called Homework Gap Bill. It's making sure students of low-income families have Wi-Fi and accessibility. And a second one was calling for investments of thirty billion dollars over the next two years to design electric school buses. I spoke, I voted for the first one, the Home Gap, the having Wi-Fi accessible to all families. But I didn't like the idea when they were stating low-income families because basically it was the companies in the rural areas that they were in, whether they had towers or not, had nothing to do with low-income families that they were suggesting. And I thought, and I, and I was, I spoke again for, you know, for having it, but against their reasoning. Hanson, town Hanson, has a lot of problems with towers. They're building a tower, a new tower. Tom lives in Hanson, my son lives in Hanson. You call him on the phone or something, and all of a sudden, they cut out. So it has nothing to do with low incomes.
Right.
Okay? And, and I think that the fact that, same thing with electric buses. They're calling for an investment, government money, and I said, look, a lot of schools, they rent out or they contract busing, like First Stute, what Penansy does. We have our own buses. So they are asking for the government to spend thirty billion dollars into a, and then invest in a private concern, which I had problems with. I think it was, I think a company like First Stute, if they wanted to maintain their company, they should be investing in their company. My personal feelings. But it passed anyway. Sanity was the nine resolutions that we had, and there was Resolution Three, Six, and Seven. They passed without any objection. And Resolutions One, Two, Four, Five, and Nine passed with a majority vote. And actually, the only ones that were spoken against was Resolution Two and Nine, the ones that I just talked about. But the resolutions, I have a list of them here. One was the dedication of funding for base clinics and services. The schools have a nurse clinic in the school, which made sense. The Homework Gap, which I just talked about. I did a full, full funding act. It's just where schools have to apply proper education to students, which, I mean, why wouldn't you vote for that? Then there was Resolution Four was, let's see. My glasses are fogging up because of the mask. I'll be glad when we're away with this. There's a Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three to exclude resets from any time. They want to now have at least twenty minutes of free, free time reset for students, that they need that. Zero tolerance policy. There was a talk on this where we need, if, if kids have an issue or we have an issue with a student, that we need to have staff that go through schooling to be educated on how to deal with students if they get into trouble. And had one resolution to alternate, alternate to MCAS. Different types of testing, right? It's an educational thing. And basically, that's it. So, and of course, the electric school buses, which I thought, that's the only one I voted against. But it passed anyway, actually mostly from people that were doing it virtual. I guess, it was like a hundred or something people doing it virtual. So they had, you know, raised their hand, and most of them voted for, you know, eighty, ninety, ninety members of them doing it. And of course, we had about sixty-five in-house delegates there. Most of them were virtual. And that's all I had to say.
Other questions?
Yes.
Probably for Sandra and Mark and Tom. Back to the subject of visiting the schools for enrollment purposes. How do we deal with our eight towns? Will we be able to get into every town to talk to the kids, you know, to go to the schools?
No. It is, it's something that we continue to try to cultivate relationships and work on, but it is not, we do not have the same access in all eight towns. Thank goodness for technology, and also thank goodness that we have deep roots in the communities that we serve. As you heard, as you heard Sandy say earlier, about two-hundred-and-twenty students, you know, coming to open house. But I think for, for us, the access issue that Dan mentioned is paramount, Tom. You can't choose something that you don't know about.
Right.
And we, we should make, we should continue to make sure that we're using all of our efforts to do that. I'll give you one small example of where I think we can make some additional improvements. We were fortunate to secure a grant for a little over a hundred thousand dollars to assist us with English learner recruitment. English not being someone's primary language could be a big barrier for a family not knowing what their child's high school options might be. So we've got some funding available to work with two of our communities, Abington and Rockland, to try to develop programming where this English learner recruitment specialist would help to, help all families who have English learners understand better what their child's high school options are. I think that's, again, that's in the spirit of full disclosure. Here are your options. The taxpayers of your communities are paying for these public schools. So I hope, I hope to report back. It may take a year or so, but I, I hope with this grant, we should be able to roll over these funds for a second year. So I'm hoping we'll see some, some gains there as well. And, and so there's work to be done.
Sure.
Wait, Tom?
Didn't the recent act that the superintendent from the South Coastal towns pass on it, the law says that they have to give us access now?
Yeah, that is, that's a, I'm gonna split hairs here. There's no mandate in, in that regulation. However, I can tell you that the Department of Education is currently working on guidance documents for what we would call towns of residence, the sending schools, if you will. And we've heard from Commissioner Riley specifically that there's an expectation that vocational schools review their admissions policies every year to make sure that they are free from bias. And that, by the way, what we did tonight, we will do every year. Some years, there may just be a few tweaks, but we will look at admissions data. We will reflect on it, and we will come back. But in the same spirit, the guidance documents are also gonna push for finding creative ways to provide that access. So it falls short of a mandate, but I think it does raise the level, and this is something that the vocational schools, MAVA, have been talking about for a while, that we can, we, we should work as partners to give families a full breadth and depth of the options. And then wherever families want their children to go, they, they should be able to go. It might lead to us advocating for bigger vocational schools. It may lead us to advocating for other ways of getting that information. We all remember a time when industrial arts and middle school, junior, high school shop classes were in, right? And we know, either we experienced it, or we know that it did exist at one point. That was a way of exposing youngsters to potential careers, even without, you know, no, no sizzle. It was, you're in, I'm taking metal shop this year. I'm taking, I'm taking wood shop. We know that those have, that those went away a generation ago. And so now our ability to, our ability to explain to families, to explain to kids about, about us as a school, about the career paths, about, about the multiple career paths where some students, students can go into allied health and go in a thousand different directions, right? That takes time, and it takes, it requires partnerships for, for that to work. It's more than a brochure. It's more than one YouTube video or something like that. It takes, it takes partnerships. So my hope, Bob, is that with the, with the raised awareness on this issue, and let us get COVID in the rearview mirror, that, that will, will hopefully have our, hit the reset button in some of the areas where maybe we didn't have that access that we, that we'd prefer.
Another note, when we had the, our meeting for vocational education, a lot of the schools have a lot of space they can't fill, and that's why of getting kids to come into the school. I would like to say, we have, we have an opposite problem. We have no space, and we have a hundred and fifty people waiting to get in, and we have no, no seats for them. Why, you know, I would think the state, if you were looking to add to your school, right? Because of that fact, that they would put you at the top of the list. Well, you know, yeah, we're doing some renovations, but we, you know, are doing some repairs and things like that, but we need, we need more space. We need a second floor. We need whatever.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, to Dan's point, and, and we've, I know we've talked about this over, over the years, the MSBA's top priority is health and safety. They don't want buildings falling down on people. You're addressing this appropriately as a workforce development issue, which is why my hope is is that wherever our future is with MSBA, that this other budget item, this one hundred million dollars that appears that will survive, you know, a conference committee, that is an outside funding source that I wanna see what the details are, but I believe we could be a strong candidate. And it focuses on brick and mortar issues that we're very fortunate to have received. Equipment grants, you've heard me talk about this for years. We've replaced a lot of equipment with outside money. There's no question about it. We're also starting to get more involved in the Governor's CTI Initiative, Career Technical Institute Initiative. There's a lot of money coming down for vocational schools who are going to run after-hours programming for a wider audience. Our focus can, our focus, we, we can do that. I was on a call today with some workforce development boards, and the number one issue, and, and Secretary of Workforce Acosta was, was the lead speaker on this. And what they're hearing from all the regions of the state, the one linchpin to these institutes running after hours, the personnel. Finding, find, not, not, you don't have to be a licensed teacher to do these evening institutes I'm talking about, but finding the personnel. And, and what community colleges or vocational schools or workforce development boards are saying is, help us find people to run this. Because we can certainly ask our full-time day teachers, and they'll, they'll do some of it. But if we can, and so the messaging for, for this meeting, it was, it was multiple workforce boards in Plymouth and Bristol County, and we've been working together for several years on a regional blueprint for, for economic development. But that is definitely something that keeps our school lights on after two-thirty, provides an additional service to the community, and the funding comes from outside of our eight taxpayer bases, right? And this money goes right back into the programs. We'll keep the building open. We will, help us staff it. We'll offer programming to people after-hours, underemployed, unemployed, career change. We'll target the markets where the, where the data says there is a shortfall. What they, their point in this meeting that I was at this morning, they said, the Southeast region is going to have to be training people at like eight times the normal capacity. And what they're saying is, for the first time in forever, with all this federal money coming down, this is not a question of funding, which they've never been able to use those words.
Never heard that before.
It is not about the funding. It's about, do we have the capacity to train people in these high-demand areas? And they're gonna look to schools like ours to host. And I see this as an opportunity for us to give more service back to our communities and to find that funding stream that can continue to keep the latest equipment. So it's exciting. We, we're poised to be able to deliver. What I don't wanna get lost is, we're still an oversubscribed, small, older school. There's got to be some funding out there to address our core issue. Our taxpayers have said, yes, we support you. We know based on our analysis that even the debt authorization is probably less than twenty-five percent of what we would need to reach the full vision of what we're talking about. But it's a, it's a start. So there's a couple of promising things, and I think from a workforce development point of view, we, we could reap some benefits.
And Tom has already sent the letter, behalf of the committee, to our representatives and senators to politically support us, never mind through straight SBA and so forth.
That's right. That's right. We, we need to look at workforce development with the same attention and, and, and energy as we would with MSBA.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Dan. Okay. Warrants?
George.
The warrants, eight, eight A, nine, nine A, nine B totaling one one million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second, Situate? Any discussion on the warrants?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Any requests for action? Anybody have anything they want on the agenda for the next? Nope. Motion to adjourn. Motion with all due respect. Whitman?
Second by Noel.
Hanson?
Same thing.
Sorry.
One or the other. Just put more.
All of them. Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.